A man and a woman of the cloth today, but Bishop McCray, I hadn't seen you in a minute. Would you mind giving us the indication, Reverend Edwards? We'll have you next time. How about that? And we'll follow with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. O God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, shelter from the stormy blast. In our eternal home, O God, we thank thee and we bless thee for this day. Thank you so much for your grace and your mercy. Thank you for your loving kindness, O Lord. We thank you so much for this day that we've never seen before. We ask right now, Lord, you would enter into these gates, O God, of law and of vision. And we ask right now, Lord Jesus, that you would bless our mayor, bless the city council, our city manager and her staff. We ask right now that you would have your way in this place. Bless our city, unify us, bring us together. We ask these blessings in your name. Can we all say amen?
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop McCray.
Thank you, sir.
All right. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, Chapter Four, Title Thirty, Code of Laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, an agenda's been posted on the front door of City Hall, and notification of this meeting's been given to the news media. Looks like we can confirm we have a forum today?
Yes, I'm sure.
All right. So the first thing to do is approval of consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion regarding approval of the consent agenda? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda? That motion carries by vote seven, zero. What do we have up first?
Under public appearances, I'd like to recognize Ms. Barbara Ann Higan, President and CEO of the Greenwood SC Chamber of Commerce, for a presentation to Council on Workforce Development.
Good afternoon slash evening, Ms. Higan. How are you?
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
I'm here to provide an update. Is that working? Since I last presented, we have been well underway with our workforce task force. And I'd like to just highlight some of our work and conclude with some of the next steps. So all of our subcommittees have met and have been meeting ongoing for the past three months. The subcommittees consist of the Education Task Force, Manufacturing Task Force, Nonprofit Task Force, Healthcare, Small Business, and the County, City, and State delegation, all meeting. And these chairs consist of Matt Wiggins, Dr. Kelly Fewox, Teresa Goodman, Dr. Scott Jones, Steve Riley, and Councilmember Robbie Templeton. And the Marketing Task Force is the entire Greenwood Together team. So this task force, all of them, were asked three items to address: immediate needs, transformational, and holistic. They have developed all of their actionable items, and we have a meeting on October twenty-seventh where we're going to bring all of our work together and document it and be able to share it at our CEO Roundtable. But already, work has happened through these task forces to begin the momentum. This Wednesday, we have a job fair at Piedmont Technical College, and that job fair is a direct result from the Education Task Force. We brought all of our local superintendents together, our local leaders within the guidance councils in the school districts. We've also brought together the SC Department of Commerce and SC Works, and all of us collaboratively are putting this job fair on for the high school students, to show them the career pathways, and then we're opening it up to the general public. Today, we also had our job fair for all the manufacturers here in Greenwood for the Fuji Films, their first layoff, their first phase of layoff. So we're trying to keep all of that local workforce right here in Greenwood County. And it was a very successful day. About sixty employees from Fuji Films came today, and Fuji has been absolutely wonderful to work with. They care about their workforce, and we care about the workforce, keeping our talent local. So following the CEO Roundtable in November, we will also have a full report out of the Greenwood Together team, inviting all of these chairs to come and highlight their work at the, before the county council meeting. It's called the Greenwood Stakeholder. That will be on November sixteenth at the Greenwood Library. So we invite all of you to attend. The next highlight I'd like to bring to your attention through Steve Riley and the Small Business Council. We are having, in celebration of Global Entrepreneurship Week, which is November eighth through the fourteenth, at the Greenwood Mall, we are going to do a small business expo. And that will be on Tuesday, November ninth. And this is free to all of the small businesses throughout the city, throughout the county. We want to give back. There is no cost to them, but we want them to showcase their products, their goods, what they have to offer here in Greenwood County. They are, in fact, the backbone to our economy. They help create jobs, and they help to keep our dollars local here. This will also be a kickoff to shop local. And we are so excited to partner with the South Carolina SBDC, Ben Cowell, Ben, it has been wonderful, the Uptown Greenwood, Laura Hudson. We are extremely excited to have these partners showcase this event. So we wanted to let you know that. I believe you received some of the flyers in your packet from Julie, so thank you, Julie, for that. The other piece that I'd like to update you on is we have hired Creative Energy, our marketing firm, under this workforce initiative. They spent the last three days last week here exploring Greenwood. They took photos of many of our top industries, as well as the city of Greenwood. They did some beautiful drone shots. They went to our parks. They experienced Lake Greenwood. Everything that makes Greenwood a great place to live and to thrive and to grow your business. Under this Greenwood Together marketing, they are hired to promote all of our assets and to create a branded message, a unified branded message for Greenwood Together. So they are off to a strong start. They did a lot of video, photos, and this will be unveiled at our November sixteenth meeting. And this will be used for media buys in areas that are high tax, that we know people are leaving the areas, Illinois, California, New York, that they want to come and experience our community because of the great quality of life we have here, the low taxes, and that we are very business friendly. So our theme for this campaign is building a lifetime in Greenwood. We want to showcase our excellent quality education that we have from our higher ed, Landau University, Piedmont Technical College, our great school districts, the Greenwood Promise. All of these are exciting to showcase. Already Lonza has built this tagline into their marketing materials. They just did a wonderful social media, Lonza Pharma and Biotech, Veterans Enabling Medical Innovations, and they branded it Building a Lifetime in Greenwood. And they just showcased, many of you were at the event last week, where they honored their veterans. And I think this is just one of the examples of how our industries are rising to the occasion and helping to bring more jobs here to Greenwood County that will help our economic base. The other piece that I'd like to share with all of you is our commitment to housing, affordable housing. We have held a number of roundtables, the Chamber of Commerce under the Greenwood Together Initiative. Your city manager has participated, the mayor, and we have brought together key stakeholders, such as our real estate agents, Nikki Hudo was there, we had our Board of Realtors Association there, housing developers, our county council members were there. So this level of engagement, we were looking at what is the cost to build affordable housing? And out of those roundtables, we learned that the infrastructure for utilities was a barrier, that it cost ten thousand to fifteen thousand more to bring some of that infrastructure to these homes. So we're taking this lead that in January of two thousand twenty-two, the chamber, along with Greenwood Together, would like to host a housing summit to address these issues and how we can partner with the city of Greenwood to provide diverse neighborhoods with mixed housing opportunities, updating the community about our current housing ecosystem. We want to update and inform everyone about the opportunities to have such mixed housing that I came from in upstate New York through a program called Housing Vision, where they built homes in communities that were dilapidated, that had high crime rates, and transformed these communities by having these mixed-use housings to lift people out of poverty, it broke up gangs, and it lowered the crime. So I'm coming to you with a skill set and experience that we would like to bring to this housing summit. On that note, to accomplish all of this work, we have a website that is being built by Creative Energy for Greenwood Together, where we will be showcasing the city. We also have this marketing of being placed media buys to other areas. We have to compete on a national level. And in addition, we just purchased a software program that will help to give us real-time data of all of our open positions here in Greenwood County, including those positions for the city of Greenwood, which will be located on the Greenwood Together website. I am asking this council for fifteen thousand in your next budget cycle for two thousand twenty-two to help support all of these efforts. This is a reinvestment back into the community so that we can do this work on your behalf. We are dedicated to this. We are looking to rise the tide so that we can show how we are thriving economically, how to attract new investment here, and how to solve our housing crisis. So on that note, I open it up to any questions from any of you.
Thank you, Barbara Ann. Anybody have any questions for Barbara Ann?
Not at this time, but I like what I'm hearing, and I look forward to working with you, especially on the affordable housing. And if there's something we can do, we should surely discuss it at our retreat.
Yes, ma'am. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Paul.
I know somebody's got some questions for Barbara Ann.
If you think of some questions later that you'd like for me to email to her, I can certainly do that as well, so.
Well, thank you, and thank you for our wonderful city manager. I'm also very proud, I was remiss in sharing the retail portion. I've been honored to have the opportunity to work with Laura Hudson. We have attended two out of the three so far municipal retail recruitment trainings. We go again this Wednesday, and that relationship has been essential in attracting retail here, both for the city and to the county. What growth happens here in the city benefits the entire county, and it's a wonderful collaboration. And I'm so honored to work with your talented Laura to make great things happen here in Greenwood. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara Ann. We appreciate the update, and we'll follow up with any questions, and y'all have a good trip on Wednesday.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. We have a second public appearance, so I'd like to recognize Uptown Events Coordinator and Market Manager Gibson Hill, and he would like to cover some things regarding the Uptown Markets' fifth anniversary.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So we have recently celebrated the fifth anniversary of the Uptown Market in Uptown Greenwood. What started as two roadside stands in Uptown Greenwood has grown to an expansion, excuse me, expansive market that has covered a large portion of Maxwell Avenue that we are very proud of and are excited to see what all we have to offer. Since coming on board last winter, we have had some great meetings and some great vision planning to see what we can cover to come up with as we grow and continue to thrive. As we started, like I said, we started with Miss Stephanie Turner, who had a vision, and we were able to help grow with her leadership dedication. And really, we wouldn't be where we are today without her, not with her guidance. We're excited to see lots of growth coming up. We've partnered with Wesley Commons. We have a partnership to where the residents will be coming out, that we bring in them once a month, and then they're welcome to come out on their own the other times of the month, and we have a token system, so there's no money being transferred that residents have to worry about. The financial aspect of it, the business office at Wesley Commons is taking care of that. We've also had a partnership with Carolina Health Centers, do a Community Health Day, and we really are excited to see all the health vendors coming out, and able to bring that access to our community at that market with low-cost access to healthcare. So it's really exciting to see as we grow and really discover different types of vendors and different types of ordinances and different things we can do to bring about a change in our market, exciting growth for our community. We have a proclamation for Ms. Turner's that Mayor Smith has. If Mayor Smith would like to read that, thank her for her service.
I'd like, Stephanie, if you want to come on up, and I really would like to commend Gibson for taking the initiative to have Stephanie come to the meeting and acknowledge all the hard work and effort she put into the Uptown Market, because it takes a special person, I think, to come into a brand-new job and really own it, and we owe a lot of our growth of the market to Stephanie and the relationship she built. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Gibson. Stephanie, you want to come on up? And I'll read this proclamation. I have a proclamation recognizing April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, as Uptown Greenwood Market Day. Whereas the Uptown Market, a one-hundred-and-sixty-foot open-air brick pavilion reminiscent of Greenwood's former seaborne train station, was completed in April two thousand sixteen. And whereas the Uptown Market promotes local farmers and allows the Greenwood community to access fresh, healthy produce while investing dollars back into our local economy. Whereas Stephanie A. Turner was the Uptown Market Manager from January two thousand fifteen until August two thousand twenty, establishing relationships with farmers and vendors, and establishing programs to provide enhanced services and opportunities to residents of the Lakelands. Whereas Mrs. Turner was instrumental in the construction, initial vision, and day-to-day operations of Uptown Market. And whereas the Uptown Market recently celebrated its fifth birthday. Now therefore, I, Brandon A. Smith, Mayor of the city of Greenwood, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, as Uptown Greenwood Market Day, and encourage all residents to join in, recognizing Mrs. Stephanie Turner for outstanding leadership, passion, and service to the city of Greenwood and the Uptown Greenwood Market. Thank you.
Stephanie, I know you probably missed being at the meetings.
Weekly in the Index Journal.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Thank you, Stephanie, for all you've done.
Thank you.
All right. We have one more public appearance. I'd like to recognize Mr. Jerry Rentsch with the Emerald City Rotary regarding the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And I'm going to give you this clicker so you can click through your slides.
Afternoon, Mr. Rentsch. Glad you're able to make it.
Well, it's a privilege to be here tonight.
Mr. Rentsch, will you use that microphone for me? Thank you.
It's a privilege to be here tonight with all of you, most of you I know personally, but there's others that I haven't met. But just wanted to bring you up to date with a journey that we've taken in Emerald City Rotary about the literacy situation in our Greenwood city and county. It's something that, have you got the...
Just click it. You can advance it with the, here, I'll click it.
Oh, there it is. Because of Greenwood Promise, because of all the emphasis... Because of Greenwood Promise, because of all the emphasis on Greenwood Promise, we got wind years ago about a program which gives children books to read, books to read from the time they're born until the age of five. Dolly Parton was instrumental in starting this program in Tennessee. Let me see. We got it. And one of the things that we discovered in Greenwood as we embarked on this journey of trying to raise monies for the books was the fact that very little, if anybody in Greenwood County knew about this program. And so we dove into it and we began trying to visit different groups of people in Greenwood County to bring them up to date on what the program was and whether or not we really needed to and wanted to get involved with it. This first slide just kind of shows you a little bit about what we're talking about because if you take a child right now between the ages of zero and five, they, you find if they're reading books, they are definitely more developed in their brain and they have better opportunity to learn higher skills. If you look at a child today who is constantly looking at television, phones, you know, any kind of information in receiving it from that perspective, we find that their language and literary skills are much lower. And also, it also does incredible things to a child's brain when you're talking about the quantity and the quality of what that child is exposed to. Eighty-eight percent of the Imagination Library families surveyed said that they are now reading more often to their child because they have books in their homes. And then when the age of that child, the number of children, family, and the parental education ethnicity generally was all taken into account, Imagination Library participants were about 30% more likely to read. So if you look at the non-participants versus those that participate, there's some real reasons why we as adults, professionals in the Rotary Club, in Greenwood, see the importance of such a program. And you can see some of those right there. What we've been able to accomplish to date for about the last five or six years is that we are currently mailing 1,200 books per month to children in Greenwood County. If you look at our record to date, November 2014 to 2021, over 32,500 books have been mailed to Greenwood children. In Rotary, we have a district governor. And that district governor got wind of this program and the progress that Emerald City Rotary has been able to accomplish and what we're just doing locally. And so he's generated every single Rotary Club in our district to take on a literacy chair in their Rotary Club to, again, have a literacy project and to develop this district database of club literacy projects. If you look at where we started, it was interesting because we kind of went on a fact-finding mission to see if books really are needed and if children, if they have them, does it make a difference? And so I had the privilege of sitting down with the school district, all the principals in our school district of elementary schools, all the people involved with early childhood development. And I went and actually presented some highlights of the Dolly Parton program. I even found it kind of astonishing that a lot of those teachers and principals didn't really know about this program. But when I got through with the presentation, I looked around the room and I said, "So if I ask you the question, what is the most important need of you as a principal and your teachers in the elementary school?" And they says, "Having a child that can read proficiently by the time they're in the first grade." They said that that would make all the difference in the world in our educational process. And that's what's so incredible about Greenwood Promise is great to get them graduated and go have the opportunity to go to a two-year or four-year college. But you got to start at the bottom. And every child in this county, we, our passion is to let every child in this county receive books starting from the time they're born every month, free of charge, with their name on it. And it is no small task. But everybody that we have talked to, everybody that we have shared the information about Dolly Parton have been very, very, very receptive to what it is we want to accomplish in the community. If you just kind of look at the statewide programs already, and this is the neat thing about this whole program, it's a proven. It's been around, Dolly Parton started this 25 years ago. And you can see the existing statewide programs, the new statewide programs, and then the states that are actually looking at it. So what we decided to do as Rotary, just to bring you up to date to where we are, we, I've had a couple of opportunities to actually meet with the Lieutenant Governor of our state and actually give her this information too. We also thought it was very important for us to talk to our senators and state representatives to bring them up to date about the program. And now we've got our entire district, Rotary District, that encompasses all the different counties in our state. And their initiatives this year is to educate their senators and their representatives to the fact that we really want this as a statewide initiative. And so, you know, we go around, we talk about Dolly Parton. It's a joint, it's a partnership between the principals, the schoolteachers, the District 50, the county library, and Rotary Clubs in Greenwood. How many of you up until the time I stepped up here had ever even heard of Dolly Parton Imagination Library? Well, that's good because that's unusual that you would have three out of six, seven people to know that. But the word is getting out, and that's why I'm here tonight, is just to give you that brochure to tell you how important it is for us as parents and grandparents in the Rotary Clubs, how even more important it is for the teachers and principals in our school districts to have children that can be read-ready by the time they're five and six. And you, I know you're probably thinking, well, how in the world, if you just get books to a child's home when they're not even able to do anything that first year, how do you get people to read to them? Because of the environments they find themselves in, because of the situations that they live in, because of all those things. And it is a proven fact that if you get books into that child's environment, they will eventually find somebody that cares enough to pick up a book and start reading them. You can't get into all the other dynamics that are involved here. But I can tell you that one of the things that that child will do after it begins to read and begins to walk, and they, when they find out that they're going to get a book in their mailbox or delivered to their home with their name on it every month, guess what? They look forward to every month of the first five years of their life. So the child really becomes the target and the one that actually benefits from it all because they're the ones that actually will initiate whomever it is, whether it's parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, older siblings, or whoever, to read to them and to get them started on this journey to be able to read themselves by the time they get into the first grade. So really, that's it. Lots of supporters in Greenwood already. If you look up there, we have a lot of different groups of people, individuals. And really, what I'm trying to do now is educate Greenwood County. We're starting to visit now because of COVID. We couldn't get on campuses with our major industries and get them sold on it. We've talked to several which are very involved, are considering now helping us. And we really believe that with the larger industries and the smaller businesses, as well as private donors, we'll be able to eventually meet our goal of every child, when they're born in this county, will be registered automatically into the program and will receive the books. That's where we're shooting for right now. So that's it in a nutshell. Just wanted you to be aware of it so that if you ever hear of anybody that wants information, just send them to the county library. That's all you have to remember. You don't even have to remember my name tonight. But just go to the county library and Jody will be more than happy because she's on our committee too. Even though she's not a Rotaryian, she serves on our committee just like Allison Perrin, who is the, what, manager, supervisor of the principals of all the elementary schools. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you.
Jerry, do, I guess, let me make sure, does every, how do you pick and choose the kids in Greenwood County?
They register.
Okay.
So right now, we, because of the funds, we have to have the funds. You have to have the money to carry that child through the end of her fourth grade, I mean, fourth year old. So they have to, we have to have the money for a certain number of people that are children that want to register. So they go to the county library, they register, and if we've got the money, we'll put them. But we don't open registration until we have the money available. And then we say, we tell the library, we've got 50 more, we got enough money for 50 more children. They go ahead and register.
And principals and teachers help identify children whose parents may not register them themselves?
Right, right. And the good thing about the principals and the teachers, they're kind of our cheerleaders. You know, they're going to encourage as soon as they start meeting children face-to-face. But see, they don't even really see them until they're about three or four years old, so, in the school districts. So really, we are going to depend on more of the word of mouth in Greenwood County to get these children involved and get them registered.
We sure appreciate the presentation. Anybody have any questions for Jerry?
Jerry, I think contacted some pediatricians, specifically Dr. Felder. Dr. Felder is really passionate about these such things. And so she would be a tremendous advocate for this.
And we're finding clinics. We're working with doctors in the centerable of the clinics, Greater Greenwood Industries, a lot of different organizations trying to get the word out so that when they do have openings for registration, you know, as many kids as we can will sign up immediately.
How about childcare facilities?
About what?
Childcare facilities.
Child, well, again, we plan to hit them all. But right now, it's more or less trying to get some of the big industries involved so that we can, the registration won't be a limited factor, that we can keep it open and we can continue to register the children.
Well, this is exciting. It's good stuff. And I think everybody loves Dolly Parton. So she's doing amazing things.
The interesting thing about it, if you'll look in your pamphlet, how much, how much reading has to do with everything that goes on in your community? Whether it's crime, whether it's education, whether it's incarceration. It is just incredible that if a child can't read by the time they're in the third grade, they never catch up. They never catch up. And that's why we have to deal with so much of this stuff on the other end.
I'm going to send you a fourth grader that I have that doesn't like to read.
Well, the neat thing about it too is we've got our RERAP clubs. We've got a club at Lander, Lander Students. Also, we've got all four high school students involved with Pinterap. And they're going to be going to the library so that if a child gets a book and their parents or grandparents or whatever, whoever they live with can't read, they can go to the library and one of these students will read with them.
Thank you.
I'm sure that's relevant where English is a second language as well.
For sure. And now we're able to get the books with Hispanic and Latino, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to new business. Under new business, item number one is to consider ordinance number 21-029, amending the city of Greenwood's official zoning map by rezoning approximately 0.2 acres of land located at 107 Gray Street from neighborhood commercial Greenwood Village overlay to office professional Greenwood Village overlay. This is first reading. I will acknowledge Draper and ask him to come up. And I believe the applicant, Mr. Williams, is here if anyone has any questions.
Right. Thank you. So this is a request to rezone about 0.2 acres on Gray Street, 107 Gray Street. Currently, it's a vacant commercial building. Mr. Williams is in the process of remodeling to turn into a single-family residence. The neighborhood commercial zone, which is currently zoned, does not allow for single-family dwellings. The office professional zoning, which requested change to, would allow a single-family dwelling in this case. The future land use aspect of the comprehensive plan, this is a mixed-use area, mixed-use development, meaning there's mix of residential uses as well as commercial uses that fits in with that, bed and breakfast and more other residential uses around. So from a planning perspective, we as staff don't really see a problem with this request. It is a part of the Greenwood Village Overlay Zone, the historic overlay. As such, the Board of Architectural Review needed to take a look at this as well. Both they and the planning commissioner and all staff recommend that be moved. Any questions?
Any questions for Draper? All these up?
Thank you, Draper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Glenn or Alice Williams? Y'all are, y'all just transforming the whole block.
With Chip and Joe around.
Y'all should have a reality show. That would be great.
It works for me.
Anybody needs it, it's y'all. Well, that's great. We appreciate y'all doing great things, making Uptown, Greenwood look great. I'm sure you've got a lot of curious visitors always walking around wondering what's going on over there. But it's great. They're trying to get closer to our church right across the street. Well, that's good. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
I have a motion by Ms. Hutto, second by Ms. Bowles. Any further discussion regarding ordinance number 21-029? All in favor of ordinance number 21-029? That motion carries unanimously, passes unanimously with seven votes.
And Mr. Williams?
Second reading?
Yeah, and public hearing.
Public hearing.
November 15th.
Thank you.
November 15th, yeah.
Thank y'all.
You can stay if you'd like. Now you don't have to leave.
And now I know whose vehicle that was outside too.
All right. Under new business, item number two is to consider ordinance number twenty-one dash zero-three-zero to adopt a revised license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act. Um, it's really quick. Um, I want to cover that in 2020, the state passed Act One Seventy-Six, which is the South Carolina Business License Tax Standardization Act. I know we've talked about this a lot. So y'all probably kind of knew that this was coming. It's been in this, in legislation for a while, uh, the legislature. Uh, the act streamlines business license process for businesses and cities statewide. The city's already been pretty proactive and Stephanie Dorn and her role, uh, was, was very active in this group. Even we, the city served as a test, test group for the, um, the rollout of the, um, website where you could go on and, and renew all your licenses at one time. Uh, so we have certain things we have to update, like we have to go through a standard license year. We have to update our classifications, our rates. We have to rebalance to make sure that we do not see any kind of financial windfall. We have to repeal our existing business license ordinance and replace it with this new one. Um, and so we're doing all of that with this ordinance that we've presented to you tonight. Has to be done by the end of the year. So that's why we're having first reading tonight. And we'll have second reading at the November meeting. Sarah Odell in our office has been painstakingly going through the model ordinance. And our ordinance trip has been very helpful as well as Eric Scheidel at the municipal association, making sure that there are a couple of nuances that we wanted to keep in our ordinance. But for the most part, we are staying with the models ordinance a- as best we can. And Sarah, if you want to come up, if you guys have any specific questions, I think she was gonna cover a couple of small things, um, related to rate classifications. Is that right, Sarah?
Morning, or afternoon, I should say. Um, yeah, as Julie said, um, most everything in the ordinance, as far as the model ordinance goes, we had most of it already in place, um, cause we've been working on this for the past ten years to keep everything updated. Um, as far as the, um, license period goes, we had already changed that back in two thousand seventeen. So that piece is done. Um, the rate classifications and, um, schedules, we have been doing those every two to three years. It just kind of depended on, um, timing for us. But now with the, um, changes with the state, it is every two years period. Um, those will be updated. Um, those follow IRS standards and what they consider, um, they take into account different businesses and their profit and losses, that type thing and percentages. And they update them. And so we will update them as the IRS triples that down. Okay? Um, the, uh, that's really the main things that, you know, like I said, the rebalancing and repeal and replace, that part is, you don't have to do it every two years also. It'll just be a matter of updating it and stuff. Um, the rebalancing part of it, basically we took the per thousand rate. So each business has a base rate and a per thousand rate that they use to calculate their license fee. For us, in order to rebalance, um, we took and knocked off five cents on the per thousand rate. So it was, um, for rate class two, it was forty dollars and a dollar twenty-five. And now it'll be forty dollars with a dollar twenty per thousand. Okay? Um, the one thing that they did as part of this is to simplify those rate classifications and rates, um, classifications and rate schedules. And so we usually have two pages and now it's down to basically three quarters of a page. So it'll make business license a lot easier to make sure we get them in the right rates, um, as that part goes. Um, as Julie said, on the portal, we have been the guinea pig. We've helped the municipal association get that up and going. Um, as far as getting all the kinks worked out, we've been doing that for three years now. Um, and so it'll allow any business, mom and pops that have to buy a license in, you know, different municipalities. It lets the big box stores that have to buy them in different municipalities, all renew every one of theirs across the state in this one location. So every CBS, Belk, um, John's Lawn Care, whatever the case may be, they'll be able to go to this one place and they can renew across the state any that they need. Um, any questions in particular that y'all have?
Yes. How about the mom and pop that's here in Greenwood that only does one business license? Can they still come to y'all and do it and not do it through the porthole? Because there's some people that just don't want to do that.
Right. They will still come to us. We will still be sending their renewal forms out to them. Um, just, just like normal, there won't be any, um, change as far as that part goes.
Yeah. So everything was required previously is still required?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. There's still an appeals process, a denial process. And the, all of that is still in place and stuff. The renewal period, you know, we, we'll send out renewals January timeframe and they'll have until April thirtieth as usual to renew without penalty.
And I'm certain there'll be kinks, but we, again, we've been working with the municipal association so long on this process. I feel like we're probably in a better position than some other communities are. So if anybody were to ask you about it, I think just send them to the, to the business license office and we'll work with them to make sure it's, you know, an easy transition. There, there really were not that many significant changes that we had to make, cause we had made them a long way.
I was just thinking about the ones that were affected by COVID that had to ask for an extension. How did that play into that?
Oh, well, that was, you mean last year? Well, we just worked with the extension. I mean, we were April thirtieth. I think they extended it to June fifteenth or something like that. So we just extended it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's past and everything now.
Right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I hear a motion regarding the ordinance number twenty-one dash zero-three-zero?
Motion to approve ordinance, uh, twenty-one dash zero-three-zero.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion regarding this proposed ordinance? All right. All in favor of ordinance number twenty-one dash zero-three-zero? Motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Under new business, item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to accept the two, twenty-twenty-one, uh, justice assistance grant in coordination with the Greenwood County Sheriff's Office. Uh, it's previously presented to you by, um, Chief Shadoan. We are looking to use this funding, twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars to, um, roll out another K nine unit. So there's obviously costs associated with that. And that's what we would propose to use this funding for this year.
I know we've been briefed on it before. Does anybody need any additional information from, from chief? Or do you have any questions? Do I hear a motion with regard to this proposal?
What's twenty-eight thousand? Is it twenty-eight or twenty-nine?
The full amount is forty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. But our portion is twenty-eight, six fifty-five. The other part goes to the county, to the sheriff's department.
Motion to approve.
I'll tell you what, just for the record, do, do you mind reading in exactly what the motion is for? I know I'm looking for it.
Can you see it up there, Ms. Bowles?
There we go.
Oh, okay. Uh, motion to approve and accept the twenty-twenty-one justice assistance grant JAG in coordination with the Greenwood County Sheriff's Office?
Have a motion by Ms. Bowles, second by Mr. Miller. Any further discussion regarding this matter? All right. All in favor of authorizing the city manager to accept a twenty-twenty-one justice assistance grant in coordination with the Greenwood County Sheriff's Office? That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
Under new business, item number four is to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Satterfield Construction for the paving of local roads with CTC funds. The bids were received on September tenth. We only had one bidder, which is not unusual on our, on our paving contracts, which was Satterfield Construction. Uh, the total contract amount was seven seventy-one, four seventy. This allowed us to get really almost all the roads from both years list, which I have here and I'll clip through. But if you recall, we didn't pave the road, any roads last year. So we've moved everything forward. So this funding, uh, from CTC, which is seven seventy-one, five, will include all the roads from twenty-twenty and the road from twenty-twenty-one. Uh, every ward has roads. There's gonna be varying applications, deep patch, crack seal, overlay. Um, these are all the roads that have previously been approved by council. Uh, I believe, yeah, these were included in your, in your packet. The only ones we would not be able to get to this year is Bolt, Cross, Wright in Georgia. Those are all in Ward Six and we will get them with the twenty-twenty-two list. So we would just ask tonight that you all, um, authorize the city manager to enter into this contract with Satterfield, please.
We can get anything.
Yeah, every ward has roads. There's Ward One, there's Two, there's Three, Four.
You're looking at the wards. I'm looking at the grades. Yeah, we did.
The first row is grade, grade, and then the second column is wards.
Would this complete the, uh, contract? Of the one we voted on?
I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
Would this complete the contract of with, for the CTC's bond?
Yes, ma'am. So the contract amount is seven seventy-one, four seventy. And our funding through CTC was seven seventy-one, five.
Okay.
So barring any change orders or anything like that, we'll give a little bit of money back to the CTC. But the, their bid came in very, very good, which allowed us to pick up some additional roads. We actually didn't think we'd be able to get, um, the, as much as we did. Um, so it was, it was a really good bid.
There's no other, no other vendors. They handle everything, Satterfield.
Our contract is with Satterfield and they handle everything, yes.
Motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Satterfield Construction for, um, paving our twenty-fourteen and twenty-one road.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Hutto. Any further discussion? All in favor of authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Satterfield Construction for paving the local roads with the C- CTC allocated funds for the years twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one? That motion carries unanimously with seven votes.
All right. Under new business, item number five, I would request council consider executive session to discuss negotiations incident to a proposed contractual matter regarding banking and investment services.
Motion to enter executive session with, uh, possible action, um, I think.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Miller, second by Ms. Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor of entering into executive se- executive session to discuss negotiations incident proposed contractual matter regarding banking and investment services with potential action to follow? Motion carries unanimously with seven votes.